The February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the Dexter Township Planning Commission will now please come to order. By way of introduction and to ensure that we have a quorum. I will introduce the members of the planning commission. I am Marty Straub on. My left, your right, got Chandler Heard, Sean Smith, Dan Barry and Alicia Abbott. And planning commissioners Steve Birch and Christie Mayer are absent tonight with advanced notice. If you now please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisement with liberty and justice for all. We get to the conflict of interest review. I would like to acknowledge and welcome Dan Barry as our newest member of the planning commission. It's very first meeting, having been appointed by the township board a week ago tonight. So, uh, welcome.
Thank you.
If there's anything you care to say, have at it, otherwise we'll. Catch that toward the end of the meeting as we do the loop. Conflict of interest review. Does any planning commissioner have any conflict of interest with any of tonight's agenda items?
Jerry, you were acknowledging Dan Barry being new. Also at that meeting, Sean was approved as his EBA rep.
Thank you. That's correct. Yep. Yep. Our last meeting, we had recommended Sean as EBA rep. And yep, the board approved him at the last meeting too. So. You're good to go whenever the, whenever we have a ZBA meeting. Yeah, thank you. Uh, hearing no conflict of interest, we will move on to approval of the agenda. Anybody have anything that they would like to add, subtract, modify in any way? Seeing none, the agenda will stand approved as presented, which brings us up to public comment. And I see no members of the public, so I presume. At this point, nobody wants to address us. MC Megan Michael will hear from you in a moment. Brings us to public hearings. Public hearing tonight is to amend section seventeen point zero three and table seventeen point one to remove the maximum density requirement for the keeping of animals on parcels. With ten or more acres of land and to add maximum animals per acre and maximum number of animals on land less than ten acres. Just a, a little preamble, I guess, before staff presents that to us. This is. Something that had bothered me from. Well, my first. I guess some of my first involvement with the planning commission, when I got on, uh, they were about ready to adopt what is now our current zoning ordinance. And I thought this part was not only kind of, kind of messy, there were some. I don't know. Logical issues that I couldn't quite balance, you know, how many rabbits equal the horse or something like that. But also I thought that it, uh. Dissuaded people, especially those in, in our, our zoning. To have farms, commercial hobby farms, whatever. And that was contrary to what the township board and planning commission have expressed through. Previous communications, including the master plan. So anyhow, that's why, that's why that is before us to try to clean this up and. And bring some, uh, what I think is, is better logic to it and promote some of our township objectives. So with that. Who's, who's the presenter of this issue tonight? Michael?
Well, I can start, yeah. And, and what you said pretty much sums up the, the little cover memo that we put together. That the language, you know, was confusing and, and, uh, we hope this'll, this'll help kind of straighten that out. Uh, recommended changes, including allow animals to be kept on parcels of ten acres or more, as long as they're in compliance with GAMPs. Michigan's generally accepted agricultural management practices, uh, as adopted by the state. And, um, to regulate the keeping of animals based on parcel size and animal type for parcels under ten acres. Um, excuse me. Per, uh, Michigan State extension samples only for agriculture, like an urban agriculture. So that language is reflected in the, uh. Their proposed ordinance language that you have in your packets.
Thank you. Yeah, my, uh. My specific concern has been that, uh, parcels of ten acres or more, and, and we have several. We have a bunch that, uh. Are in the, our, our zone, but they are ten acres and above. Tying that to GAMPs also, I think is consistent with what we've done recently, tying some, uh. I don't know, what would it be like restrictions, limitations, permissions? To a document that is outside of the zoning ordinance. So should things like that get updated? Like maybe the most recent one was, we might have recognized, um. Fencing around pools. That it, if it complies with the state regulation for that, then. We don't have to consider it as much, you know, our, our ordinance doesn't become stale if. A best practice were to change. And like Michael said, so. Under ten acres, yeah, I could see where. People could have issues with that, and this is an attempt to try to better lay that out. So. With that, uh, this would be the time. That the public, if we had any, would address us. Seeing none, we can close the public hearing at this point. And move to action items, agenda. Item number seven, which is our discussion. So the recommendation of the township board on the proposed zoning ordinance amendments, section seventeen point zero three, table seventeen point one. To remove the maximum density for keeping of animals on parcels larger than ten acres and to add maximums per acre for parcels of less than ten acres. So. The text is before us. We've had the presentation from staff, my editorial comments. Anybody have any, any discussion on this item? Oh, maybe to throw it out there, I did get, uh. One reminder from planning commissioner mayor, she had brought this up in the previous meeting when this had been. And generally discussed, and then it went back for some, some refinements. She brought up. That it would be good if nothing we do in this change would prevent overly restrict. Like wildlife rehab if it's licensed. I don't know if it's a license certificate or whatever by, by the state. So since she's not here, I will, uh. Toss that one out. For part of our discussion. Right with that, what would anybody like to do with this?
So if I, if I may, I have a couple of comments.
Please.
One, I had to go back through and actually look at the, the GAMP. You know, the Michigan's, uh, generally accepted agricultural management, management practices, because I've never read through that. And I wanted to see if it stated anything about. Animal density, like how many animals you could have over ten acres. It doesn't address that at all. It basically just addresses conditions and, you know, like a, a free caged fowl. Needs like a foot, a foot and a half of the space free caged, which is nothing. So you could have dozens of fowl or sheep or goats. Over ten acres because there is no true density limits. I, I don't really have a true issue with that because I don't see a true issue in the township with that. And I looked back at the previous zoning ordinance regarding the section of keeping of animals, just to determine what had changed from our two thousand and twenty ordinance and the ordinance before. And in keeping in that sphere of not being over restricted, I, I did think, well, I, I live on seven and a half acres. I grew up on a hobby farm. I don't have any farm animals now, but I've always considered that and I can have, you know, up to. Three to four horses on my calculation, but then I can't have any chickens or rabbits. And something that's new with the two thousand and twenty ordinance is this, the statement that for parcels, uh. Lot, lot area used for allocation of one animal may not be reused for another animal. And the previous ordinance differentiated between small animals, which is all chicken, fowl and rabbits. And large animals, which are the goats and the sheep and the horses. And I completely agree for large animals when it comes to grazing and just, you know, nuisance. That if you have too many large animals, you have extremely muddy wet pasture. In the winter and the fall and the spring and basically a dry lot in the summer, you can't graze, you know, when you have too many. But. Chickens, fowl and rabbits, they don't share the same diseases, parasites or anything of large animals. And I don't understand why. You, why there's combining those. Entire rooms of density. It makes no sense that someone on eight acres can only have four horses, but cannot have any chickens or anything else. It does not. You know, go towards the spirit of a hobby farm at all.
Well, you, uh, you ought to be able to have four, according to this table, you ought to be able to have four chickens per acre. If you have under ten acres, can't you?
Right, but then you can't have any other type of animal. That you're, you're limited to four chickens. You can't double count.
I also have an issue and Megan has come to the podium. She could probably address this. I, I still have an issue, I should say, with the equivalency. That, that we're saying you can have. One horse per. Let me say it differently. You can have. One horse, let's call it five acres, because the math is easy. I could have two horses.
And that's it.
That's still, that's still screwed up. I'm, I'm, I'm mis, I am misstating this. It takes you two and a half acres to have a horse. But if you had five acres, you could have five horses. One horse per acre, according to this.
But a maximum of four. The, so you couldn't ever have more.
Yes, thank you. The, the problem I have, which this. Some interpretation required, but. Problem I, I have with that is. The equivalency apparently of four bunny rabbits equal one horse.
It doesn't make sense. Like if I had a family and I had a child that wanted to, you know, show their goat in the fair. And the other child that wanted to show a rabbit and have some chickens, you can't have a combination of those.
Yeah, I.
Limited to like.
We still have, we still have an issue with that. And I think the. Kind of ridiculous example I used last time we discussed this is I could have, you know, four little bunnies. In my house, not the. My wife would let me, but you obviously could not have a horse in the house. So, so these things. Anyhow, maybe at this point, we should let our, uh. Consultant speak to that and see if she can kind of bring us all back around.
So.
And I just wanted to state the previous zoning ordinance, it, it did differentiate the density for the small animals and large animals. It didn't say that. You know, you had to combine all that density to get your total. I'd like to see that separated out again. It could be.
Um, so, uh, Megan Masmanaka, Carla Wardman. To record, um, and yes, we could, you could definitely separate out the small versus large animals. Um, and then I do believe in one of the camps on site selection, or maybe it's manure. Um. There, they do do a density by animal units. Um, and I can find that for the next time, um, but those are much denser than what's in your table that's proposed. So, is it one animal unit is basically one cow, we call X amount of rabbits, it was X amount of chickens and whatnot. Um, and so that's how they would look at that. And also for a working farmer, they had different animals. Along it, they would look at these animal units and put them together. And the way that those regulations are put together, um, by Michigan State. Um, they're usually with help from Michigan State, um, and veterinarians, um, are actually people writing those codes. So you can use those if you want. The, also the thing about the reference to the GAMPs, um, is that they change every year. Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development has an appointed commission that they update them every year. Um, and in the food system world, it's a bit of a, almost feels like a, a shadow group. Because you're not ever sure when they're gonna, when they're gonna publish the GAMPs, what they're gonna be and whatnot. So you have to kind of always look, look at the website. But it is a more backed up, um, scientific way to look at it. It's just when you get to residential. Properties, there's much more room for nuisance and expectations of privacy and whatnot. Um, and so it's a bit of a dance. Um, we could absolutely go back and come back with and look at the previous. So that again was one of the reasons why to change the language. So just smack you in the face. So you know that, um, it's a, you know, it's not only the lots next door, it's lots across the street. Um, so there's some limitations, I guess, I'm standing by state law from the example that you gave by the door. So if anything comes from CBA. If it was a site plan that came through the planning commission, e- even if it was an administrative site plan that. Um, the DPZ could, the director of planning and zoning could approve. He or she can make conditions, but just a simple zoning permit, no.
And I don't have any feel for this because all we see or all we would see on ZBA is exceptions, but. It seems that most anything anybody wants to do in one of our Lake Residential's zoned areas is, is going to require. A very, well, I, I should say a high percentage seems to me. You can tell me whether this is correct or not, but. Most cases, they already don't meet. I think under our new, our current, still call it the new current zoning ordinance. Minimum lot size in Lakes Residential is. An acre. An acre if you have onsite sewage and a half acre if you're on. The municipal system and hardly any of those would, would meet that with or without an additional lot.
There's vision, it's kind of like your jet, get out of jail free card from minimum lot size and minimum lot width. That's right before this language on non-contiguous lots. So it says, if you have a non-conforming. Lot in terms of size and width. And it's residential, you can build, you, you can build on it as long as you meet the setbacks. Said that.
Okay.
But then right underneath it, it says, however, if you own the lot next door, or if you own the lot across the street. Then they have to meet certain circumstances in order for you to be able to, to build on. Then essentially what it does is it says, actually, you would use those lots. Next door to you or across the street as part of the land overall. And so that leads to a bunch of different things where it's. Such as the people who bought the house next door to them, because they wanted to have a place where their, their kids or whatnot stay. And then. When we looked at that, it's like, oh, well, no, now we have two houses on one lot. Even though you bought the lighted house next door to you in order for. You know, to, you had an opportunity, fixed it up and you thought, oh, like, then I can rent this out or I can, I can have someone stay there. But if they have someone stay there only part-time and it's. It works as like an accessory dwelling unit, but it's a separate structure. It doesn't match. It, it just, again, those unintended consequences, these are what they are on my law.
Well, and one of the consequences of having such small lots around the lakes, much smaller than even the point five acres is. Just about everything that happens does encroach upon some setback or another. And some lots have two front yards, which makes it. Further setback, but I, I don't know. How, how frequently do you run across that if somebody comes in for, you know, kind of simple permit? Add onto a deck or cover a porch or something like that?
Oh, golly, I don't really have to think about it. Um. Where it runs afoul of these, you mean?
Yeah. I'm just kind of trying to get a handle on. What are the consequences of what we do or don't do?
So.
Yeah.
If you, if you don't act now, we're going to continue to have this language. Um, that to the average person is not understandable. I feel like from an administrative point of view, we've fixed it. That it's not going to get mixed again, missed again, as long as whoever is issuing permits goes to the single family checklist.
Checklist.
That, that we develop because, and it's, that question is right there so that they, they, they need to go look.
Um, and I'm sorry, is, is this. Wording either the same that's in the checklist or, or the logical steps through the checklist result in what this would? Yeah, okay.
Um. Again, it's not easily understood by the average person. A lot of times people who come to the counter will have gone through the zoning ordinance. And they will not have looked at this section because it's not in their zoning district. It, you know, it's in an unusual place. It's an unusual provision. And so that when we get to that point, then. They need to make some adjustments. Um, and a lot of times, a lot of Michael's job is. Talking to people on the phone or via email saying, oh, you could do this, you could do that in order to get them into compliance the majority of the time. And then when either can't get them into compliance or they say, I'd rather go for variance, um, then they go to the CBA.
We can often massage them into compliance. Uh, and, and yeah, certainly I'm, I'm spending a lot of time kind of hold, handholding folks. To understand these kinds of provisions and, and setbacks and particularly, you know, in lakes, how, how to best fit what they want to do. On the parcels.
Okay.
Is it, I, I have a fundamental question regarding the across the street issue. To me, I don't like it. For lack of a better word, I don't like it. I'm not comfortable with it. And I think your examples actually show why. What if somebody uses that to develop parcel here and then sells the other piece? I mean, basically you're buying offsets. So I just have a fundamental issue with that, which takes me back to the. All of the language it's here, you know, we're built, all of these pictures are help, to help explain how someone can do that. Is it under the? Can we just get rid of that? I mean, just put it bluntly, can we eliminate the across the street? The language in here that allows it. And I guess the second part of that question is just understanding what's been done before. Have there been permits issued? Because they use the across the street provision to build what they've built, because this is only in the new code, right? This didn't exist in the old version. So it would only be things that have been built in the past four years. Has anybody actually used it?
Maybe a handful of times. It's, it's, it's not that frequent, but it has come up.
It's made a difference at ZBA to some extent or another, but maybe only to a degree. They, they had non-conforming lot sizes it was and. It didn't really make that much difference because it was just now, if you take that into account, it's less non-conforming, but didn't. You know, didn't check the box.
And I guess in my mind, I'm not as concerned about the. The frontage, the setbacks, it's really, it comes into coverage. You know, at what point are you really able to play with the coverage because of that large hunk of land across the street? And with some of the other examples, you could say, if you join the two parcels, now you're conforming or closer to conforming. So yes, that makes sense to do it. But because you, well, can you join two parcels that are across the road? Across a right of way, I guess I get depends on the kind of right of way, but getting, it still comes down to the, how do you. Prevent something from happening in the future that undermines the original intention of this to give people an opportunity. That's where I have the hardest time with it. Um, and I guess what goes along with that, I would ask again, that in each of these examples, it seems to me there is something that could be done to make them. Less non-conforming. So for example, the ones common ownership, well, then be common or not common, whatever it is. You know, so that all four parcels are in the same name. So you don't have like a split of the parcels or, um. I know that's a tough one where you're dealing with the two with the one that's undeveloped, that's the two very small parcels. But again, that there's probably some way of massaging the, with the word that you were kind of used. To meet the goal of what they're after without potentially putting jeopardy to the other property. But the one where they're across the streets. I don't feel like you could say, sure, but never sell it because the word sold is a fundamental problem. Well, would it be possible to address that? I'll ask you, um, by, um. Requiring, uh, the combination of the two lots, so they cannot be separated. If they want to expand the structure in a way that would require more land.
You could require the combination.
Across the right of way.
Across the right of way is, I, I would say if they're adjacent to one another, across the right of ways, it's difficult. Because there's, I, I mean, again, that, this is areas where I feel like. I would want the township attorney to weigh.
Yes. Who, who owns the property under the right of way? Most rights of way that I would be familiar with, and I'm not familiar with how it works around the lakes. That's just. Across this piece of property.
Most of them are.
Is, is an association owning that? Better question, I guess, is who's paying taxes? Underneath that right of way.
So underneath that right of way could be, um, if it's a county road, the county owns it. Um, and those might be some circumstances. If it's a private road.
Back up on that one a second. County doesn't own the property that my side of the center line.
Is meant, that's the right of way.
Yes.
Road itself, they own, they.
Okay, I, I get it.
But when it's a private road. Um, the, either the private road is in common ownership of the association. And sometimes in the homeowners association. And other times you will see it and you will see it in your, in your township's maps that the, the property line of the original platte will underneath the road. So every single parcel was split by the.
Right.
Split by the private road, that private road's easement over their property and doesn't necessarily divide that property.
And, and then we know who pays the taxes on that.
But then they may have been split later off so that some of them, it goes to the center line of the private road. It's not. It, it, again, it, it, it's not the same answer everywhere because.
Okay.
Community that's had a lot of parcels change over time.
But do we have like some property owner, property owners association that's paying taxes on? These roads or?
They wouldn't pay taxes on the roads. What they would do is be as responsible for the maintenance of the roads and more often than not, what they would do is they would collect a special assessment district or they collect dues.
So that's kind of what I'm getting at is that I don't think anybody but the property owners own that property. We're talking about the road splits it and, and who owns, there was some mention of who owns the road. I get what you're saying, but somebody's responsible. For that being a road, but the property. Might be split at this theoretical center line of that road. But it's. These people own all the way to there and then their second parcel, they own starting there all the way to there. So.
Contiguous.
Yeah, it, it is, it's, yes, it's contiguous. There's no question about. So on that basis, just the fact that there happens to be a road across it, while it does seem kind of complicated. I, I don't think that complicates it. What complicates it is, like you say, all of this stuff was taken into consideration. Be taken into consideration the next time they want to do something with their property. And does that? Will that align with what the townships, um. Goals are, I guess.
Can we postpone until we can clarify with the, with the attorney, especially on the lots across the street?
What is it we? Want clarified specifically?
Can. Can two lots separated by a street? Non-contiguous. Can, can those two lots be combined into a single legal lot?
I guess the first question I would have is. Can we find any that are like that? Can we, can we find some property that is not actually contiguous because? The street, the right of way, it's not, wouldn't be right of way in that case perhaps, but that street is owned by a different entity than. The property owners.
I, I know of such properties, so they, they exist here in town.
Okay.
Yeah.
In that case, who does own? Whatever that is that splits them.
It's kind of mysterious to me, but I, I believe we, we all, in my neighborhood, we, we all share the responsibility of the maintenance of the. And that's just, we don't have a homeowner's association. We just do this voluntarily. So I'm not sure of the legal nature of it.
And I may be under a misconception, but. You know, way back. Early eighties, when I was on the township board, I thought somebody explained to me that. Every square inch of property, somebody is paying taxes on. And if we find one that isn't, it was some mistake that was made, you know, a hundred years ago. So that's, that's kind of stuck in my mind that all of these are contiguous. Well, all of these are separated by this imaginary line. If it's common ownership. It's at that point where, yeah, they. But now I question what I thought I knew.
This is my understanding.
It's never mattered, I guess, still now.
Well, and it seems that by using the phrase right of way. In here, it's not differentiating between private or public. And yes, the public's a little more obvious because the county owns the road and cares for it.
The county cares for the road, but they do not own the land underneath it.
Okay, so the county cares for the road. In a private scenario, they don't necessarily, and it's living in that gray zone of what's happening. But the code in front of us doesn't differentiate because it just says right of way. So regardless of that ownership piece. The trigger that we're looking at here is the right of way, the existence of a right of way. And that is what is allowing. Development on the others, the opposite side. And I think this, I don't know if in your diagram, the one on Anne, if Anne is a. Public or private road, but I think.
Pardon? It's private.
It's private, okay. But that is an example of exactly the kind of scenario that I am questioning. Where we don't. You. You. I think maybe that's.
Well, I'll just add to your scenario. I live on a private road. And like you had mentioned, Daniel, that. The, the road was set up before the private road standards. There are private road standards, but it was grandfathered in before those standards. We don't even know if easement was ever.